Will you call the meeting order? Roll call. Christine, Nikki. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the bigger team and justice for all.
Any conflicts of interest to be clear at this time? I don't have any. Approval of the July 7, 2025 agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
All second to approve the agenda of July 7, 2025.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the June 2, 2025 meeting minutes.
I move to approve the June 2, 2025 meeting minutes.
I second to approve the June 2, 2025 meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the June 17, 2025 meeting minutes. I have a change that needs to be made to those meeting minutes. So... I mean, the change is that we authorize the finance, the new finance officer to go to budgeting the following day. I failed to record that in the meeting minutes. And so, I would like to make a motion to amend the meeting minutes to reflect that the finance officer was able to attend the budgeting.
I agree, second to that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Your motion carries. Alright, committee reports. The first off is the finance officer reports. And so, we're just, we just did a transition over between the chief finance officers. So this month, the revenues and expenses will not be available at this meeting. We had to get the bank, we basically had, we started all over with the primary signature. And so that meant that the new finance officer had to re-establish the online account. And then Travis had to follow and come back in and sign again. It's just standard procedure. So that just meant that the finance reports were just going to be delayed for this month. So next month, the finance reports will be available in full because then she will have access to all of that information at that time. So with regards to monthly expenses, she does have all of the vouchers and checks available for signature by night. And so, what we'll do when we have the check signing party at the end of the meeting, that if you're interested in doing any of those vouchers or the checks, by screening through them through the volunteer meeting, you're welcome to review those vouchers and look at the expenses following on for the meetings. What will happen is there will be a list of expenditures available for public review so that you can see what the expenditures are for the month, for the month with the totals available. So, finance officer, other than what's on the agenda, do you have anything?
Yes, so we want to talk about opening a credit card for the town to cover our expenses because right now, we're writing checks, like reimbursing every other day for things that we have to pay out. And so just we kind of put it on the, put anything that is necessary and has been approved onto that card and not reimbursing it. It would include like office supplies and things we might need, whatever that is.
Yeah, the biggest challenge we've had so far is making sure that the road and streets has fuel and parts and things that they need to improve road and streets. And so, to help alleviate that, make things more seamless, provide giving a credit card for the town. And then following on in the agenda, there will be a credit card policy and how that will operate. How to do the credit card. So what has happened is the board needs to approve that the town is, is going to open a credit card at least in the meeting minutes. Nikki will then provide that to me. And then we'll be able to apply for a credit card that will follow the credit card policy.
And who will be the user?
The users will be the town of Buffalo Gap. So when she does the credit card, then she'll specify the users on there. And that user will have to sign the agreement, the credit card agreement. They will not hold the credit card. It will be kept in safekeeping until it's needed. And then you can have access to the credit card and then return it along with the receipts and the voucher of what they spent, you know, for the town's, what this, the expenditures were. Questions? Any discussion from the public?
Would that be like a, if they paid credit card like we discussed before? Or is it going to be like a virtual?
So we talked to Laura at First Interstate Bank. And so, it would be a credit card with First Interstate Bank. And it won't, it won't be a prepaid, it'll just have a certain limit on it. And the board can also specify the limit on the credit card. So if we know what our expenditures seem to stay under, then we can determine what that limit is as well.
Do we have a starting moment on that and then we can make a discussion later on? Increase or increase?
My recommendation for starting moment and based on what you've seen in the bills would be between $2,000 and $2,500. I think that's a safe kind of square to start. Most of our expenditures have been well under $500. In fuel, hydraulic oil. See, we'll may need to get some parts for the mower now. So I think that may cover a monthly expense. Thank you, Shelley. Any other discussions?
Yeah, and then will that be paid off in full every month? Or will, as they can be on payments?
Oh no, that's a, that is, the expenditure was budgeted. It has to be paid off in full every month. That is not... The other thing that is, is that credit card will not be in the state checking account or the checking account. It will be brought to the meeting with the, with the invoice as far as what's been charged and then what that payment is. Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Any other discussions from the public?
So if we have to pick something up in town like Big A or...
Yes.
...some bird, can we get the credit card from you?
From, it'd be from me or Nikki. And even, could even be from Travis depending on if you coordinated. If we're not available, we, one of the board members or Nikki, you'd be able to take the credit card.
We just do everything through that credit card?
That's right.
Similar way I do it with our nonprofit, the other one, my nonprofit. There's a limit on it, right? You sign it out, you take it, they go leave it, they bring it back, different receipts, account, paid off, so.
Does the town ever have one before?
Yes.
Was there control of it?
We don't know.
There should be one credit card?
There should be one.
Not everybody.
Not everybody.
So that one got canceled?
Absolutely, yes.
That's go for fuel and everything?
Yes, whatever is required for, to operate the town.
So for the last year, no one has had a credit card?
That's right, no one.
Yeah, no.
We've been doing reimbursements. So I make a motion that the, the town moves to open a credit card with First Interstate Bank with a credit limit of $2,500 to be paid in full every month and presented to the board with the invoice and expenses of the, of those monthly purchases on the credit card.
I will take it then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And she knows two more things.
So just, we were made aware, we had a complaint letter for our customer wanting their trash service removed. And they wanted to bring that to the board and then better respond. So I'm bringing this up now to see what we can do, second to that, right? Just to see if this is a common one.
And in accord, the resident's complaint is that they're being charged for a trash can. They're a water user. At this time, they are, there's no one in, in the residence. But the ordinance specifically states that if you have an application with the town and your opinion, water user fees, you get a trash can. Now, you only get one trash can, you don't have to pay for two. So the, and follow the ordinance. The complaint is legit in that they may have two trash cans and they only need to pay for one. But according to the ordinance, they get a trash can, they have to pay for it. And once the house becomes occupied with another resident or by them, then that will transfer, the application will transfer. The ordinance does not apply, I'm asserting.
So my question is, the amount that's being requested as refund is that based on two trash cans? Or is this is based on more, removing one trash can?
It's, you want to propose to your society, you can apply that. Yeah, I was trying to bring it up against the two.
I mean, I'm opposed to removing one trash can refund for one. By ordinance passed, as it's written, you have water service, you have to have a trash can there for your money.
And I agree with that. So we'll follow the ordinance and I will draft the response back to the, to the residents to let them know our decision after they determine if they have one or two trash cans.
And the last thing is everybody, I'm looking at the simple ones.
Alright, so... So in the budgeting, we learned that you get a notification of your levy request every year. And we received that from the county. So our levy, we can request up to $38,699.66 for the budget year 2026.
Up to?
Up to.
We want to keep that low.
We want to keep it low.
Keep the levy low. This is for the taxes, right?
No, this is what, so... This isn't a levy percentage. What it is, is it's a revenue that we receive from the levy. They call it the tax levy request. It would not be taxed to you. You've already, you've already been taxed that in '25. So our levies are in arrears. So this isn't, this isn't raising property taxes, no. This is what's going to be available for us to request because they've already collected the taxes.
Can we lower it for next year?
Can we lower it for next year?
Yeah, let's lower it.
So what do you want to take out of the budget if we lower it?
What was, what's, what can we request up to?
Up to $38,699.66.
And what did we request last year?
We did not.
That'd be interesting.
We got told what we were going to get. So I think we got penalized because we may have not... We were in the midst of this last year, we were in the midst of the audit. I'm not sure that we even caught on to this last year.
What were you told?
We were told we got $32,000 and some change.
That's...
Yeah.
So if you request a higher number, it does make the taxes go up?
We can't request more than what is available. So this is our available.
If you request less, property taxes go down?
No. Not necessarily.
There's a lot of factors.
Yes.
There's the school factor, there's, I mean, the town itself. If this year we requested 32, then we go up to 38,690. That is an increase, yes. And that will affect the levy calculation, which then could bring, bring them up. But there's a lot of other things in there. There's, there's a building out here, there's all kinds of stuff that could change that formulation.
But the levy is based on what you already have.
The levy is a mathematical, mathematical number based on an equation, based on our requests and based on the value of the homes and then what we're asking. And then that's the calculation to get the levy. It's a formula of how they get to that levy number.
So we, so the county collects the taxes, right? And we get them provided to us in arrears, which means that they've, they've collected 2024 and they're now dispersing them in 2025. So it doesn't make the taxes go up. We, we can't request more than what's available.
For this year, but what about the year after?
We can't request more than what's available. So in that tax calculation, what they'll do is they'll calculate the property taxes per piece of property, right? And then, then they'll say, this is what's available to request. They've already calculated it and billed you for it. So we're completely out, we don't get any say in the calculation of the levy.
Well, if you make the number higher, we'll pay for it at the end.
We can't make the number higher.
Higher than what they're...
That's right.
We cannot make that higher.
But you can make it lower.
We could, but that doesn't mean that property taxes go down. Because last year, we received those.
It might not go down, but it might not go back up because we have it.
Okay, so if we make the property taxes lower, what is it that we don't do?
You have to cut your budget.
Our total budget is, for this year, it's expected, it's going to come in lower, I'm sure. Our total budget is $82,000 for the whole years to operate this town. And the property taxes are not even close to half of that revenue.
The reason I'm concerned is because our water bill is, is going sky high. We haven't seen the end of it. People that are on fixed income cannot afford an increase in water and taxes at the same time.
I agree with you.
If there's something you can do for the levy to get it lower, then maybe that's what we should do.
But to get the levy lower, the amount that we're asking from the taxpayer, you have to reduce our actual budget for this town.
So you turn a budget into the county and it goes, and that has something to do with it?
We are incorporated, so we don't have to turn our budget into the county. We do have to turn it into the state after we've spent it. But we don't have to turn it into the county. So here's another thing that is pretty confusing about the budget is the water is, does not yet pay for with the general fund. And that's where our property taxes come into, because our general fund revenues.
That's the only income we have is...
The general fund revenues, there's...
The taxes are coming from property taxes.
That's our main...
But that could change.
How can that change?
We could do something different.
Like a sales tax?
Sales tax. Exactly what I was saying. That's what they do everywhere.
Well, not everywhere, but I would like to see it happen.
It would cost more to instigate sales tax in this town than this town would receive through sales tax. It's already been researched. There's no sales tax in this town. It's not worth it.
But I see, I see, I see Greg's point.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out a better way to... There's got to be a way for the town to make income if the budget is that high.
If the budget is that high.
I've heard this through all the years. The town is broke, we have no way to pay for nothing, but yet we have a budget.
We do.
If we have a budget, that means we have to pay and we have to have a source to pay with.
That's right. So...
Greg?
Our...
I just want to make sure I read this perfectly.
Our, our major expenditures for the town, I just, let me put a couple things in perspective. So we have $82,000 in revenue for this year. We estimate that, right? Every month, the state and the county will send us our revenues. It doesn't always work out to $82,000, maybe where we come up a little short to 80. We don't, we don't know, right? So lots of things can change in those revenues. So...
You might as well expand on that. You might as well expand on that. If you have wheel tax, then you get some revenue from that. Fuel tax, if the property value went down, so where they, that levy is calculated, we get that property. It was $400,000, it goes down to 350 or 300, or, or house is gone and you lose $250,000, $300,000. So you calculate it, then you lose that. The individual can apply to have that removed off and then that reduces your revenue in the tax calculation. So if we have less vehicles out here, that people are paying registration and paying the wheel tax, it reduces it.
So let, I'll just put, I'll just put in perspective with you for two bills that we have for the town that really impacts the town. One is our insurance for the town. This year, our premium is $6,000 for the whole year. And that thing has been scrubbed to say, this is what's necessary to be on there. So if you take $6,000 of $82,000, you're, it's what, 8% of your revenues? And then our street lights. So...
What y'all have to go think about, the poor guy that is on a fixed income, only makes...
I know.
$12,000 a year and the water bill's taken up, what's the percent of that?
Water bill doesn't come out of this.
No, but it comes out of the guy, the individual's income. But if he's on a fixed income, he's only making $12,000 a year. That's higher than that. That's a lot of money to him. It seems like a little, just a little bit to some, but just to others, it's make it or break it.
It's a lot of money.
So I say lower the levy, that's my goal.
You get more than, you have to lower the budget. You have to lower the amount that the town is spending.
I get you, I get you. Just, there's got to be a way to...
If I could just add some context about mill levies. Because the way mill levies work within the county is it's a different levy every year. Okay? Now, the way this works is, is let's say that this year, my house is worth $250,000 for tax purposes. The next year, they, they say it's $300,000. And they do that to all the homes in Custer County, including in here. Let's say last year, the mill levy was one, but our home values skyrocketed. So if that mill levy stayed at one, instead of the county bringing in a million dollars, they bring in $1,250,000. Everybody with me so far? So then what they do is, is they reduce the mill levy because the county knows that they only need $1,100,000, as an example. So they reduce the mill levy across the board. So what this paper is, is, is a paperwork shuffle, in my opinion, okay? What they're saying is, is the mill levy for the county, based on what they figured out amongst the state and everybody and all the property taxes, is that that mill levy is going to provide the town with this amount of money. And then the town needs to agree to it. And if they don't agree to it, then the county will decide what, what we're going to get. So really, you just need to sign the paper.
I see.
Yeah.
That's probably true. Just a bunch of red paint.
But we will, so September is when we read our first budget ordinance for 2026. Tomorrow evening, there's a public hearing so that we can take public input on the budget. So between tonight and tomorrow night, we might have that idea that helps us get some...
There's got to be, there's just got to be a way because this water bill thing, we haven't seen the end of. There...
It's an air fryer.
We're getting raised $17 every time they do a street, and we're only on two streets.
I understand.
That's kind of, that's, that's unaffordable for a lot of people.
I, we understand that completely. And I've been racking my brain over that. And there's some things that have happened, and we'll discuss tomorrow night at the hearing, that have happened with the water that has put us between, in this position right here where our hands are tied on what we can do with the water.
A lot of ours. I know, you guys have been having to do a lot of work, a lot of lumber crunching.
It's worth it, man.
And...
You gotta take care of your town.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that.
Yep, it's worth it.
Somebody's got to have an idea out there.
Trust me, I, Christine's heard me say it, and if you haven't heard me say it, I, I usually give out property taxes. And I would figure out a way. I've worked with a group that is working, trying to figure out how to do that. Because I think you're not securing your property. You can pay off your property. And the government can always say, well, you didn't pay your taxes, I can take the property in front of you. I don't think that's right.
I think that's right.
There is a process. And there are some calculations and there's some groups out there working on that. I've worked with some of the legislators, with, on that aspect, so I do hear that.
The property taxes are another thing that have gone sky high. My property taxes were rose 350%, which I didn't think I was even able to believe them. But that's what they do. If they do it, then you're done. They're not going to ever lower it.
Any other discussions from the public? So we do, another, okay, before, go on. Alright. So when we went to budgeting, we learned that the community center, they receive donations from the community or all, all over the community for breakfast and different things. Well, before we can spend that money, we need to have an ordinance that brings the money into the, into the town's accounts so that they can spend it. And so, this is just formality. We, we learned something new on how to handle this now. So this ordinance that I'm going to read, and I'm just going to read the heading and the first two paragraphs. And then anyone that wants to redo it after that, you can come up to me.
When you, Christine, when you say it goes into the general fund, how does the general fund, or can only just get one grant?
That is what the town has decided that's been recorded in meeting minutes. But you have to, it's general fund overall, that's how the, the state views it, that's how they do it when we submit our revenues and expenditures. But you have to bring it into the books. It doesn't change how they manage the community center. All it does is bring it, bring the money into the books formally and then meeting minutes.
Because it's not technically a revenue source like property taxes and expenditure. So this is a revenue that's been built in.
So the community center isn't a nonprofit organization anymore?
It is not. It was handed back to the town the summer, late summer, fall of 2023. The town inherited it again.
But by doing that, then we become responsible for the maintenance of the building.
We've been responsible for it from it since we received it. At that time, the town, the, the board voted for the community center to be managed by a committee. They established their committee. And so basically, the board and the finance officer, they're, were just balancing the books. That's all this does is balance.
Ain't no money that we have with community center?
They bring it in, but they get to spend it because the past board said that they get to spend it on the community center. So it's been approved in meeting minutes and that's how their committee operates.
And that still needs a lot of work.
And they asked, in the last year, they raised a $220,000, because all the windows upstairs just need the rest of the thing to have a location.
So ordinance 2025 dash zero one is... Or 21? Thank you, okay, good. An ordinance to supplementing, mentally appropriate funds. Be it ordained by the board of trustees for the town of Buffalo Gap, county of Custer, South Dakota, the following sum is supplementally appropriated to meet the obligations of the municipality and comply with South Dakota qualified law nine dash two one dash seven. Whereas the town of Buffalo Gap has received additional funds in the amount of $4,269 into the general fund from contributions and donations that were not anticipated in the annual budget. Now therefore be it ordained that only supplemental appropriations be made to the general fund for fiscal year 2025 and the movement of funds are hereby approved the 7th day of July 2025.
I move to approve the ordinance.
I second the motion to approve ordinance 2025 dash zero zero one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You had a draft for your place setting.
There you go.
Uh, motion, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, water and sanitation department.
Well, so far we got the big picture on Pine Street. Just wanted to review these driveway slums, it's dried out. Sanitation, I'll look into that. I'll be with whoever I need you to meet with, you can just take care of, if you don't have sanitation, or sanitary. But everything so far is going good. I talked, uh... What's your first name again?
Travis.
Travis. Talked to Travis this morning. We had somebody mess with our resident hydrant, water hydrant opened it up, run it up the weekend. hydrant opened it up, run it up the weekend on them, so we checked everything out, our tank is fine, we're good on that, but I talked to the person, and they said, you know, if it happens again, they're starting to come up with a problem, they will put a padlock on the hydrant, so we can just open it, leave it running. Other than that, I'll be getting the information, so I can get my water sample turned in here within the next few days, while we're on the sample taking care of the month, and, you know, I need to look at the state and see about, uh, quarter reports. It should be about time for a court report, I'm thinking, and I'll, you know, Carrie, find out, or find the paperwork, find out where Carrie get her last sample from, so I can take it to the, the new sample site, find out where they're at, and go from there.
Where was the hydrant left open at?
Beechwood.
Oh, okay, good. Over here, it's probably gonna get locked up, because we had no idea that we'd get a water bill.
Uh, I was talking to her today, like she said, she didn't even realize that when she was there for about a half an hour, it was running down the road, and just realized.
Yeah, but it was on all week.
Right, yeah.
She was closed before, I mean.
Yeah.
So we get a water bill, we won't know, but it's probably gonna get locked up.
Yes.
Been there forever for the community, community.
Where's that hydrant at? I, I tried to drive by and look for it.
Right, behind the weird pit. Right, right. Is it on the road? Around the corner, on First Street, from Maine.
What was it on that, uh, west side of?
Yep.
Right around that side.
Uh, almost right behind where they're meeting at that, right there.
West of the scale.
Yeah, west of the scale, west, west of First Street.
Yeah, I've got a camera, but it doesn't quite catch her, I can look and see how long it is right there.
It's, it's back in the bush.
It's back in the bush, I know my camera, camera can't get that.
Right.
We'll find out how much is water, we'll get to a lot of it.
So what I would like to add into this discussion is, um, I didn't know this, but I learned that the town, that Sarah provides the fuel for the mower to the town, and there, we are not charged for that, so I would entertain a motion, uh, this water bill, that we enact the forgiveness for that water, since she does pay for our fuel for a mower.
Is it gonna be the whole bill, or what would be above and beyond?
Above and beyond her normal billing, but she has two trash cans, it's, she's typically in the ninety-six dollar range, but it would be above and beyond what that, um, normal billing would be. We don't have to make a decision at this time, but that would be something that, um, I would offer to the board to consider.
Yeah, I think that's something I'd definitely consider, I, I didn't know she was.
I am there.
Doing the fuel, so.
Very good, I saw.
What did you guys think we were getting the fuel though? I thought you knew that.
I.
It depends where you are, the system is to what you know, Sarah's done it for years.
I didn't know that she donated that fuel to the town.
Ever since I've been holding.
Longer than it did.
And, and I thought, and I'll say, I think the town has to at least show that as a, as a, what is it called, in kind donation, because then it has to be, I mean, we do need to show that, I know I have to show it federally from a property, whatever, somebody brings in something that's used, uh, I think it has to be at least, even though it's a donation, I think it has to be received as an in-kind donation, so that's good to know, but we do have to bring it in, have like we do for donations to the community center.
Yeah, I learned about this by reading past meetings.
Yeah, but I do think that's appropriate, we definitely talked about it, and I, I don't see a problem with us giving, you know, above and beyond issues.
We'll know what the water bill is, in our office meeting, we'll know what the bill is, and so.
Then we can actually take action and, and credit it based on the amount that's above.
So, um, and instead of making a motion about that, I, I would make a motion that we continue the discussion next month, um, once we get that water bill.
With the numbers?
With the numbers.
I have a second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our water, um, system deficiencies list.
Okay, I'm working the water system, the contracting portion for the water system deficiencies, uh, the first one is tank one, which is the above grade, the vent on the top of the tank is damaged, it must be replaced, uh, based on some feedback from Todd, Christine called the insurance company, thinking maybe if I can help damage, they haven't approved it yet, but if they do approve it, the insurance company will cover it with a five hundred dollar deductible, we do have one estimate of twenty-eight hundred dollars, uh, another, another company called TMS says they can beat that, uh, but we, we, they are working up the estimate right now, so we can replace that, uh, the other two are the tank two, below grade, there's an access hatch, that access hatch has a large metal hatch that takes two people to, uh, to bring, to take the hatch off, so that you can get into the underground tank, it's missing, uh, a rubber grommet that goes around it, and because of that, uh, the concrete itself has spalled, it's falling apart, it has a crack going through it, in addition, uh, the lip of the tank is not twenty-four inches above grade, so TMS has a concrete specialist, they are going to fix that, install a new hatch that one person can lift up and close, and, uh, they have everything they need, and they will provide us with an estimate, that's all I have.
Herman, since it's gonna be one person accessible, is it gonna have a lock mechanism?
It'll have a lock, lock mechanism, it, it'll probably look a lot like the ones you see out on the highway up here, the metal ones that open up.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, report on water loss, so when I did a meter reading this month, we did have a significant amount of water loss, but we also had a significantly that Todd replaced, and so we think we may have brought that down a little, um, I have a look at them lately, but we're combating it one break at a time. Okay, um, the park has requested that a yard hydrant be installed, the park, it was approved by the previous board, that hasn't happened yet, so I moved that item into the water sanitation department, so we look on visibility of that, and I talked to Todd about it, and he said it's something that we can do, but he requested that we put a pack online, so...
There you go.
Um, so I did put that in there, um, and so in coordination with the park, Todd, Todd can work with the park committee to give that installed, but it was, he was, he was introducing it, so.
Yeah.
All right, then Todd, we have operator certification, kind of dates coming up for October and December, I have them here for you, so we're gonna pick them up and peruse them and see if they work for you, but, um...
I'll make, I'll make it work, guys.
All right, well, I make a motion that we tend, send Todd to the operator certification training dates of October seventh through ninth, and December second through fourth, if they change, they change, but at this time.
Since he was certified before, he has to do it all over again, because there's too much time allowed.
Certification to expire.
Yeah, I'll second the discussion.
Yes.
Is there gonna be a contract, uh, for a train that, you know, deserves, and I'm only gonna bring it up because of Christine, it serves six months, and you have to get back to four, or is there gonna be something that we navigate through that, so that the town is not paying, and nothing against you, Todd, I do, it's purely a question.
I see it many times.
Because I, I do it with mine, whenever I send my nurses to their training for ultrasound, I tell them, you're sending a contract for this longer, you're paying me back.
That's right.
So are we gonna work some things in that?
I will entertain that motion to continue the discussion, um...
I, I say it'd be a minimum of six months per certification.
Yeah, because you get two.
I have to have two.
Yeah.
Question and distribution.
We don't have to make a decision at this time on it, but we can start the discussion and then the ordinance blocks, and what that contract is like in the time period.
So I second, because I'm, I'm okay with sending two that, I think we should talk offline after this, and kind of figure out what we, what we think it should look like, what, six months or eight months per certification, and then how much, you know, is paid back or what, because we wanna make sure we get our money, because how much is the certification? Sixty? Sixty? Sixty?
They used to allow you a year to get that.
Sixty dollars per class.
Per class.
Yep, and then we pay travel, so it will require him to stay, you know, mile length hotel, and everything.
Got you. Where's the next?
One's in Rapid, but they're multiple day, um, certifications, so that's up to Todd, and there's also a spirit fit one, so. So that's up to, to the person attending, whether they want to do that, but by all means, if it's a class, I think that it's important that we provide what they need. So all in favor of the motion of the training?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Roden Streets and Grounds and Moe Wayne. You have your hearing items, Steve?
Yes, I do.
Okay, good. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Roden Streets and Grounds and Moe Wayne. Your turn, it's your turn, Sammy.
I don't know, Moe Wayne's going gray, you know, we checked on those tires.
I've got, I found the tires and the, uh, plates that you want, I just need to show you after the meeting, if you say yes, it's authorized to purchase.
Yeah, I have to fill that board out.
Oh, yes, that, that was out weed eating today too, and we're going to, we're eating another roll of string for the, for, um, I got most of the town, the part I didn't get was over in the northeast, and then part of the, uh, north currently over here, but the most part, I think we got most of town, um, ready for the ball, I guess, so. The same thing I got a question about too, another person asked me about this, and that is, all of those trash cans full of cans up here, bags, there's gotta be about sixteen or eighteen bags laying out by the overage, some of them in the trash cans, um, I don't know who's responsible for getting rid of those things, but I guess, I was told that it was Raymond's, uh, contribution for the haul or something, people donate, I mean, put the aluminum cans out for that.
Throw their garbage there? What's that? Throw their garbage over there?
I have, um, I've tagged the community center for that, because they collect those cans for the community center, and so I have that under their items to follow up with them, as well as that trash that they dump behind the fire, fire hall, so I have that on my agenda for them, I'll follow up.
Will that stuff get moved before the ball? For the meat and the cans?
That's unlikely, since it's gonna be Friday.
You can, you can load the crap you've been building on the truck, if you can, you can, you can do that for, probably a year.
I'll make a phone call, I'll make a phone call and let you know what I find out.
Yeah, safe for me to clean it up and get it out and turn it into scrap? Turn it into scrap, is there a scrap, I don't think it's down here, you have to get all the pressure, but you have to go to that.
But that's, it's, there's community center, so let me check.
They don't give you much of those cans.
I don't know why they collect them.
Looks like it, it's dumb.
I know it does.
It's terrible.
Build a bin or something.
I have, I have it, I'm, I'm tracking it.
I guess it's fucked a bag in town.
How many bags?
What'd you do, put some weight in there? He used to put sand in there.
Leave a little beer in.
No, we crush them, we crush them. Fill a bag, you want those thirty gallon bags, thirty or forty, thirty or fifty gallon bags, uh, and then we just fill them up, and we take, you know, four or five minutes time, we get.
Is that squashed?
Yeah, squashed.
Oh, you gotta squark them.
It's stopped with any cools or nothing?
No. It's a good idea, I should probably do that, but wait.
All right, Steve, what else you got?
Um, that's about it, we're about ready for the blades, and we're gonna get this in on that, and the tires.
Yep.
And then I'm afraid of another roll of, of reed use.
Reed or string.
Can we just pick that up at Ace?
You're, you're welcome to pick that up at Ace, if they have it, and.
They do.
We do have an account at Ace.
That's where we got it.
Yeah.
Do they have, do they have names?
That's a good question, I'm not, I know folks have used it, and we pay the bills, so I don't know, that's a good question.
Are you sure they know?
The Ace hardware wants to raise.
Do we have an account anywhere else like Mon卡?
We don't, um, and we can't get an account with Mon卡, because we don't have three local accounts to show that we're creditworthy, so that's been difficult to get one with Mon卡.
So we don't have one at Ace then?
Yeah, that would be helpful to have a credit card, that's what I hope. And then, um, Steve, on Cedar and Cedar, where they did that last, um, or the two times before water break, and they moved those big stones from that corner, the trucks are cutting that corner again, can you put some stones on that corner to keep them from cutting it?
We can stop the trucks from coming there.
We can't, we want them to maintain that road.
Yeah.
Not only maintains that road for us.
Right, but they're hauling out of Peabody, and Peabody's always told those guys to go down Lone Tree.
That's not our road.
I know.
You can't stop it.
But we've always stopped them from doing it because of the dust.
I'm coming down Lone Tree a lot more now, because I, I see them everywhere.
I don't know how we stop it when it's not hard.
I just call Burt's or Peabody and ask them to tell those guys to go the other way.
Take Mon卡 out to Centipede.
Lone Tree.
On Lone Tree.
You can't keep them off.
Not always, but I've seen centipede trucks coming around there, and...
Yeah, you can't, if you have a haul road agreement, I guarantee you I can stop them, I did it when that, um, that, um, solar plant was going into New York, they were trying to destroy street to New York, but they had a route that they had to take, I went down and stood in the middle of the road, and we stopped them, so I, because the haul road agreement, so they have to.
Up there by the highway where they're coming out, they tore up the, the shoulder.
Who do I call, Greg?
Peabody. You wanna talk to the superintendent there, uh...
See it.
All right.
Edolph.
It's worth making.
But those boulders should be put back there, because other people are cutting that corner too.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what we'll do, we'll make the call on that. All right. You have Roden Streets, good, be good?
The other thing is, those trucks come in, some of them two hundred thousand pounds, they go over little streets like this, they could damage our water lines, that's a lot of weight.
Those trucks have so many axles on them, there's no way they're gonna damage your water line during fire foot.
It's possible. Most crap.
Well, I'll call them, how about that? All right, anything else, Steve?
But, I would just say, as long as they're, as long as they're on the county road, they shouldn't be hitting our smaller.
They're not, they're coming in and turning down the stairs.
Well, it's residential there.
And getting out, and so.
The dust is mostly, mostly fine. Without the entire.
They're corroded, the dust is partly there.
Yeah, but I mean, what are they gonna tell me, sorry, that's our route.
Would they mag water it, it ain't bad, but those trucks will pound that mag water out in no time, they only do it once a year.
If anyone knows where that haul road agreement is, I can, there's some things that could happen.
Lone Tree.
And then to follow up with you on the, um, maintenance of the vehicles, and these are the filters and all the things that are needed for that.
Oh, so you need me to reach out to someone, come down?
Yep, we'll need an estimate first, to make sure that we're still within our budget to that. Well, maybe we'll need the estimate.
And you want the part, or you want the part and the work?
Um, we had to discuss with Steve that they were gonna come and do the maintenance on the vehicles, and they needed parts for the filters and all of that, so, so that's what it was.
James and Christine, we might end up having to get, uh, an oil change for the mower, I don't really look at how it's on at the moment, but I guess that's all possible.
So where do you get the supplies for that?
Usually a car quest.
Okay. Do you know how soon?
It's only a couple courts plus a filter.
Okay, do you know how soon?
Uh, you might be able to go a month, I don't remember what the hours are on it.
All right.
I would say a month, depend on how much mowers you've got to do.
Okay.
It'll dry as it is, it's probably not gonna grow much now.
So, um...
Just as long as you guys roll it, that's possible.
Yeah, okay, that's possible, that's good. All right, building maintenance, um, at this time, we don't have anyone, like, um, identified as building maintenance, so I'll just go down the list of what I know. Um, the broken glass at Woodman High submitted an insurance claim on that, our estimate to fix the window was eleven hundred dollars, the insurance deductible was five hundred. Um, it was fourth of July, so I didn't get a response back from them yet, so I'm assuming, when I talk to the adjuster, it sounds like they're gonna cover it, so, when it gets back to me, so that was the other claim that I made to the insurance.
Somebody shoot it?
It looks like it came up from the roof or something, but who knows, it will probably be a while, I'll see. It looks like it came up from the roof or something like that, but who knows? They're rolling them while I was there. And then um the trash behind fire hall that was pulled out of the community center. I'll work with committee on that to see what they're gonna do with that. So that's all we have for building maintenance. Animal control, nothing to report, all are quiet, thank you. And community center committee, I don't, I didn't receive anything from Ray on that, but I will ask them about the aluminum cans. Um, so I don't have an update unless anyone in the Ray ministry.
I need, I need to make something from Ray giving my warning.
Okay.
I don't know what it is, I didn't, I did it, so.
Alright. deposit. Alright, okay, okay. Looks like it was a deposit, so we'll have to- Alright, part committee. Herman, are you speaking on behalf of the part committee tonight?
Uh, she is not here.
Okay.
But we did, we did, we did collect a lot of metal. We got two hundred bucks for the metal that we collected, which included a bunch of hydrants. Uh, we are gonna meet on Thursday to continue to take the rocket ship apart and take that and haul it away. And we're also gonna try and haul away the trash that's behind the uh old fire hall. That's it.
Alright, board and trustees, um, any other, I don't have any other mail call. We have, we have to complete, we press that. Um, I don't have any um, oh, yes Steve.
One thing I gotta ask you guys, that in the, in the shop down there where the truck gets backed in there, there's a more of a thing for the truck down there, the heather block. Is there a way that we can move that out of the way? Get it someplace where we can put the mower in there this way?
Yes, so if you wanna have a cleanup day of the fire hall, I will volunteer to come help. Um, we can, you know.
I mean, maybe to come up with a place to put it?
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
It's awful heavy, but kind of, you'd get about four or five guys or a loader on the other side.
Good thing we got a loader.
I don't know where we would put it. It might fit, it might fit in that little back room.
It might fit in Woodman Hall.
Uh, Cam mentioned maybe putting it in there if it will through that door. You'd take it apart piece by piece probably.
Yeah. Or it would be great if the, if the part committee knew kinda where they wanted to install that and get it installed. So um Herman, will you take that as an item to Kim?
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Alright, alright, board and trustees, I'm not aware of any other meeting events where we'll be together. Tomorrow's the opening, that's official, so I don't have anything.
Blowout, any of those are blowout, but it's not.
Yeah, it's not an official event. Okay, and then I do have a blowout update and then John, do you have anything to add please?
All I've come to that, the flight for life helicopter's gonna land at ten thirty. Uh, behind uh, country.
Okay.
Karen country. And they're gonna sit down with the people that look and do it. And they will leave.
On what day?
They were gonna go, that is a for sure deal unless they have an emergency.
On what day? The parade day?
Saturday.
Saturday. So it's like a show and tell? Oh, that's cool.
No ride.
No ride, so it's also-
Well, you can have a ride, but it might cost.
I don't want that ride.
They didn't build it.
Alright.
I thought it lasted nine years.
Okay, and then um the other thing I have from uh Terry Kaiser. I did contact the county, they're aware of Main Street closing. They've also contacted the emergency services in our area. And then I've let Randy Schrahl know that we'll have that street closed as well for the parade. Um, but he has asked if we would place um some trash cans along Main Street, which is smart because they'll be trashed if we don't. So I volunteered to do that um Friday morning. I'll, I'll place them along Main Street on Friday.
What time's the parade?
Parade is at eleven or eleven thirty?
Eleven.
And that's on Saturday, right?
Saturday, yeah.
Where's uh, where do you wanna have that?
Over by the fire hall.
Are you gonna write your lamas?
No, I'm not gonna write my lamas.
Alright, any other business for the trustees I haven't heard? Hey, old business, um proposal to open first here on Cold Road Streets. The last day we initiated the engineering survey and utility survey. And I do not have any updates for that at this time. How about you?
I don't have updates, but that was gonna happen to the county.
I was assuming you chose. That will just continue, old business. Let's see, update and organize all town ordinances. It's just an ongoing process. Um, nothing's really happened in the past month, but they are available to be viewed in the finance officer's office um at any time. So if you make a call, you need a copy of one of them, please, get with us.
What day is the office open?
Right now I'm doing Mondays and Tuesdays um for the moment. We start the process of finally getting out there and then, then I'll, if there's a better day. And I'm also willing to be getting out there early on, so the Mondays and Tuesdays are what I'm, if, if this week it'll be Monday Tuesday Wednesday.
From what time you're tied?
Um, eight thirty, um eight thirty to say um ten thirty or eleven. I can change those, yeah.
And you can always call me too.
Yeah, I'm right up the road too, so if you call, I'll be down there. And I may get past on extended hours just because I'm sort of getting everything organized.
Alright, water construction base two, this is, I don't have a new update on this yet. Um, but it will be an ongoing discussion until we complete the construction.
I wonder about that.
Yes.
What do you need to put on that? See if they can establish a channel, second, three, to that hybrid.
That's right. That is what you, okay.
Just wanted to make that note occasionally.
I will contact Raymond and check on him, the hybrid in front of Perry on next, right? Really, I need to clarify the asphalt, because it may do that and the asphalt just look like it doesn't, so. Thanks Todd. Alright, so water outage communication plan. We did have some outage this past month when um Todd had to fix a break. It seemed to work well. We only had to lose two customers, but between Todd and I, we were able to contact everyone who may have been impacted. Um, we still don't have a definitive plan on what that looks like. I would like to discuss having a town website or something like that to make these kind of vacations because we did have another incident where the well surged. We didn't know the pump went out, everyone lost pressure, Todd got back on it, we were all running again quickly. And so we don't have quite a plan yet, but we're working toward that. We need some additional tools to put that together.
I'm happy to lose to a website challenge and I'm not opposed to this challenge either. Once we have a town website, we can have to make sure everything's posted. So even though we have to have a post it here, we also have to make sure it's also accessible. I don't think that's an issue because of that.
I think it was posted, the date posted, the line posted.
Yep, so I'm not opposed to a website. That we have something to do with now and if something's not working right, you can just go to the website and see if there's a notice. If the first one I notice is going down, there might not be a notice.
Right, but I don't think Todd has an issue with any of the calling saying, I don't have any water. Um, and so he's very open, open to that. And it seemed, the last time it was seamless, but it doesn't mean it's always gonna be that way. But we do need to clarify that plan, what it looks like. So let's continue the discussion of the website.
Yeah, I think if we're gonna have a call plan, everybody who's got water service will have to give us a functional number. So if that doesn't work well, we have to give us a functional number.
Yeah.
It could work well, uh, and if you don't give us a functional number and you have no water, then we're supposed to be notified. It's not our fault. Where do I sign up for that? I don't, I'm webless, so.
Yeah, so we do have people in town who don't have those abilities.
Right. I mean, I think that's at a minimum, if we know there's a break here and we know we're gonna shut off the switching for that valve and that valve, and that's gonna affect these properties here, uh, if we could put it on the website, but then, you know, look at our, almost say roster. Like, okay, these addresses here, they need a call because they have a website. Boom, boom, they, they keep on calls or keep that around or they don't have that, that working ability. So what about putting a letter in the next water bill saying, if you would like to be on the list to call, put your current number here if you choose? Yep, I think you have that.
And what was helpful last time is, is I think that we need the board members and Nick needs to have a copy. Todd brought me the copy of the map and he's like, I gotta fix this leak, it could impact blah, 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 right? And so then we went through, I went through the list, what I could contact, and then he contacted the other remaining groups. Um, and it come down and we only had to cut off two residents. So that was helpful to have the map to see who was gonna be affected.
Yeah, that'd be important, right? And, you know, I guess you put in that letter to say, if you don't give us a new contact or two to update you, you may not be notified, and we're gonna have a, a water outage if we know we're gonna have one. Or if we have one, we may need to be that separate to handle it.
So we'll continue the discussion on that until we clarify a plan or, or water outage. Alright, opt out or, opt out water to your customers. So at the hearing, um, it was decided that we would develop a um survey to send out and then the board would review the survey. Okay, I'm sure I've got it, yeah, that's it. And so um it's, I've broken it down to be pretty simple. I don't wanna inundate any more questions and don't, I don't wanna be inundated with data. So I'm basically asking the property owner if they have an opt out meter. And we have identified what we believe are all the opt out meters. And they're, it's between thirteen and seventeen. I don't have the exact number. And my map is, I have, so I'm going off, I'm gonna write, it's that range.
This is from phase one?
This is all the phases. This is everybody. Yep, so phase one is, phase, phase two is affected because we're gonna have construction and we need to know whether to bypass that or not. And then um the other question is, I need to know if the buildings are habitable to understand if it requires water service. And then if there's any yard hydrants. So if there's yard hydrants and there's an opt out, there's no house, then there could still be a possibility that you're accessing water. And or do, do they even wanna continue to opt out and discontinue water service?
I think moving forward, anybody, this is my opinion, so I'm open to discussion. If you're opting out, relying on some type of valves, but there's more water going to it. Because if there's a leak, who's, who's gonna, who's gonna account for that, especially if it's on the other side? Where they gonna cut it? Uh, that would be at Helms to make that determination where exactly we put it in the valve. But it would be between town and the meter. The most likely real close to the main lot.
The reason why these questions-
If you cut it at the pit, it could still leak from there to the main.
But hold on, the reason why these questions are important is because when we do our walkthrough with Helms, they'll need to know who, who continued to opt out and who were bypassing. So they'll need to know that. So Raymond's already aware that we're working on this separate and that's why we're gathering the data.
And we're like an efficient site, so the city is responsible for it.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't know the solution yet. We're just gathering data so that they can be a solution to those. And then the, the last question is, is if they wanna upgrade the meter and then they'll have to pay the monthly fees in case. Um, and I don't know if they have anything to add to the survey on this plan to put this in the water bill so they go off this way.
The only thing that I've had in here, unless I admit it, I would do, is those who opt out, whether it's from the previous or currently, do they understand what that means that they're gonna, that they're gonna continue to opt out? Do they understand that they're willing to discontinue?
So up here at the top, I do say that we're upgrading our water structure, or through the drinking water. And that customers who opted out of installing new meters will need to make a decision either to install a new meter and pay non-user water fees in accordance with the ordinance. Or discontinue water service to the property. In order to understand the needs, we would need to know, I mean, the, the board voted that we would send surveys out to learn about the opt out water.
I think it might be very important to put, if you discontinue service, then you will have to reapply and the application fee to be reconnected. What's the application fee?
At right now, the application fee is thirteen hundred dollars. But-
And that's gonna lower for sure. It's gonna go up.
That has to go up because it's costing more than to install a new meter.
So if they disconnect, you're not gonna be able to use your old meter bed if you reconnect?
No, we can't, we can't connect these old meters. They need to be upgraded to new meters.
They're gonna put brand new meters and the sleeve and everything?
If they, if they decide to reconnect, they'll have to put brand new, and brand new meter. If they decide to opt in, we'll have to put a brand new meter.
Oh, tell them, but then you're paying monthly. We don't wanna pay.
Up to this point in time, getting a brand new service in your property was the same price as having your opted out water just turned back on. The thirteen hundred and whatever dollars it was, was my understanding. If you opted out, you want your meter turned back on, it was thirteen hundred dollars. If you have nothing, it was still thirteen hundred dollars to have them dig up the street and bring it into your property.
So here's the problem.
I mean, that just-
I understand what you're saying. The current problem is we have meters that we can't read and we can't determine if there's water. We find out that there's water leakage sometime in the future. So that person, if, if it was my house and I had a water leakage, I have to pay for that. You don't have-
I understand all this.
And I'm just saying, if you have a meter and there's a leakage on the other side of that meter, we don't know what to charge that individual. I'm just gonna use you because we're having a conversation, so I'm not picking on you. So now we're losing water, but we don't know where we're losing it, because we don't have a meter that's telling us this property is using an exorbitant amount of water. We have to, to protect the citizens and so that we can hopefully reduce our costs for the water system. Just like Greg was talking about, we have to control our costs. And to do that, we have to make sure that we can control any water leakage. So if you don't have a meter that we can read, we have to cut it. But we can bring it in at this time and we're doing the construction. But if you don't, we have to cut it, put a valve on it, so you can make sure we secure the water system from any leaks that are where we can't water. With all not opted out.
Now these opt out deals, is this gonna be when they're going by and doing this work? Or are you gonna go around and say, this guy's opted out, we're digging him up? What, you have to apply for it now?
In phase two, when they do the construction, so they're gonna come down one up, then phase two and then second.
They doing this right here?
Yes. Um, that, that's why we need to know this information now, so that Helms know to either connect that meter with a new meter bed or to continue on and disconnect that and continue on the water service to the next meter.
So you say it's gonna go up? Say in the future, I wanna keep opting out, cut me off, whatever. Couple of years from now, now I want my water back, is it still gonna be the thirteen hundred and some dollars?
I would expect not to cost to install a water line now. What did he owe?
Butter is twenty six.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, the whole system we have just seems so, something was out of whack here.
You can't, you can't buy the meter bed for thirteen hundred.
Well, John, I'm not denying, that's what I'm saying. Something was way out of whack here.
At the time the ordinance-
I mean, if I had to pay thirteen hundred dollars just for them to turn the valve on, or if you had to pay thirteen hundred dollars to have a brand new one, that's what the policy is bringing up to them.
I think, no, that's not the policy. So to have them turn the valve on, it's four hundred and fifty dollars.
How much?
Four fifty.
Turn just about.
That's the-
That's if you're opted out.
This ordinance was written in twenty nineteen, so we know what's happened with inflation the last six years. So four hundred and fifty dollars to turn the valve on, but you need another new meter, you have to still have a new meter.
I was unaware of that.
It's in the ordinance.
Who, who had a copy of the ordinance?
Craig Linger.
No, I'm, I'm saying, before in twenty nineteen, did, who had a copy of the ordinance?
Oh, I don't know who had a copy of it, but it was published and I do have the original.
I don't remember ever hearing that it was four fifty.
It's four fifty to turn it on.
I thought it was more.
If you were opted out, it was four fifty to turn it back on?
To turn it on, and if you needed, if they installed a new, new service, meaning that you don't have service and you need new service, it's thirteen hundred dollars. That's the current written ordinance as it's written right now.
Well, can't we just lock that price in?
Right, how do we afford a meter pit at thirteen hundred dollars?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying-
I'm saying if we-
Are you hungry?
If we-
We can break it, leave the pit alone.
I was gonna say that.
You're gonna, you're gonna wind up changing the fit.
We have to change the pit when we do the R.
So that's the problem.
Yes.
Dang it. I'm screwed either way. Just opt me out.
All right. So we'll gather that information and then when we do the Helms walkthrough, that's where we're gonna-
So great points, question. If, if we have all the addresses, we tend to say every water user, opt out, opt in, doesn't matter. If you don't send it back to us, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna treat you?
If you don't send this back to us and you have an opt out meter, we are assuming you're opting out and you will discontinue service. So we'll bypass you in the construction.
Yeah, I think we can put that in. That way, it's very clear, if you fail to return this by such, such date, we will consider you as an opt out. Because there's a date that we have to walk through so that Helms knows how many were connected and how many were not connected.
Easy.
That way everybody is aware, it's above par, and it's in their water.
Any other discussion from the public, new or old?
I see some heads shaking.
I know. It's painful.
It is.
I'm gonna apologize that you were, you're dealing with this, but we're gonna have to deal with it, so here we are. All right, so, um, let's see, I'm gonna make a motion that I, I'll update the survey and then this will go into the, this month's water bill to those opt out customers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Link cross conservancy piece. I did find a copy of the old piece. This one was dated from twenty sixteen and it was five years at the time, so it expired in twenty twenty one. This was the most current one that I'm aware of. I don't see them here, so I-
Letting, oh, I was gonna say, I did go up there and look where they were talking about putting that fence line and that seemed appropriate, but they're gonna put the fence on, they're gonna back it up so we can drive right up to the thing, no problem all the way to push back. So I have no problem where they had a lot of fence. But I've been here to have a discussion about it, we may have to-
I thought they were leasing it or more.
It's a, well, their lease has expired, so it's kind of assumed that we're fine with it. The town never made a decision not to-
Hey, there's income. Get some income.
A lease, and so we're trying to clean the administrative process of this, at this time.
But we do need to have a conversation with the, and say, we need a conversation, find out what you wanna do by this date or we're gonna have to take certain action.
I make a motion that we set up a time to have a discussion. Link cross conservancy without decision, to have a discussion on what their intent is moving forward.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I, opposed? Motion carries. New business. Key control policy, so I have a draft key control policy here for you to review and parade in or make you to review. So if you can review it and give me feedback on this, the intent of the policy is to understand who has keys to what and then to create a key control owner, the finance officer, that's who I would volunteer. Um, and then we have an, um, control, a pool has keys to what? And then you would have employees sign out those keys and have like an official key lock box. So I do know a moment that is that Steve's changed one of the locks on the old fire hall. He's added a deadbolt to it and that's what they use to secure the old fire hall now. So there's been one lock changed that I'm aware of. If we can review those policies and then the next meeting, um, by the next meeting, provide me any feedback and I will read and approve policy, uh, policy for us to prove, approve at the next meeting.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we, do I need a motion for that?
No, we just know what's on there and it'll come back through.
Old doors, the old business. Credit card policy, so also provide a credit card policy. In general, the credit card would be held by the finance officer and she would be the one to issue that if a purchase needed to be made. The purchase would be made and the credit card would be returned within five days along with a receipt and a municipal voucher, um, to be presented to the board for people. That is the gist of the policy, that the card is not seen for personal use at all. So again, I'd like for the board among the Nicky's to review the credit card policy and more like that, um, an official policy in the next meeting.
Okay.
All right. And then, the last thing that we have on our new business is to discuss and as necessary, approve the CDL and heavy equipment pay rates. We do not have those pay rates established. And when we ask someone to operate a heavy equipment or the CDO, this is just from my discussion is that, or from my standpoint, is that they should be compensated appropriately. For the skill set, exactly.
Yeah, that'd be easy to figure out the state scale.
And so with that, we know, I think we have an idea of what customer provide, you know, pays-
Or even county, yeah.
And the county, and then I think you have some experience as what another county pays. So we can kind of, I think we should come up with what those pay rates are and then, um, you know, publish those in the minutes so that they're compensated appropriately.
You all have specific numbers at this moment, I can tell you.
At this moment, um, the only thing I have for CDO is I have a few different values and they range from twenty dollars and fifty cents an hour to twenty three dollars an hour. Now, those are counties that make way more money than we do. So that's what I have to go on. Um, for the heavy equipment pay rates, they are the same. They range from nineteen to ten dollars to twenty six dollars an hour.
What do you have that you need a CBL?
Uh, the dump truck, right?
Yep. Yes, you do.
It has air brakes.
It does have air brakes?
Yeah.
How do you do it? You can handle without air brakes?
Yeah.
And who's got one in their backyard we can just swap it out with, right?
That thing runs nice.
It does, it's a, it's a perfectly good truck.
How many miles does it run on, twelve thousand or so?
Eighteen miles.
It's low, right, see?
It's got a little miles.
I got a road trip in it out of the fuel station one day. It was fun.
It needs a little, it needs a little attention too, but, uh, all in all, it's a good truck.
So given, given, um, what, our revenue is honored for a town. I, for the CDO, I would propose that we, um, pay the CDO for over nineteen dollar an hour and then the heavy equipment pay rates would be, um, twenty one dollars an hour is what I would propose.
I have to see a problem with those numbers, that some of those numbers are, the town is starting.
There's, there are other towns starting.
That's a start, but we don't have to, we have to bring it up to the twenty seven if you're experiencing, we're thirty two.
Yeah, I think we have to work with you when our revenues are.
That seems a-
Well, you have a cap on that?
Cap.
Cap, right.
So if they're gonna get raises-
How many hours they can do?
No, if they're gonna get raises every year. Will they cap out at a certain amount?
You talking about the individual or you talking about the heavy equipment rate?
The heavy equipment rate and the CDO murder. Say we have, you hired this guy, he's a CDO driver. And you give him a raise every year. Are you gonna cap him out at a certain amount? Or are you gonna keep giving a raise thirty years down the road if he's gonna make it?
So I don't see an annual raise, is there?
We don't.
We don't put an annual raise in our budget, we don't have to get past, we don't have that.
We haven't yet. But I see what you're saying, yeah, if we continue doing that.
I mean, we can do that, I think Greg can get past.
I, I-
He'd be in here and say, at first it was more water filled.
No. It ain't gonna get, the truck ain't gonna get driven much.
No, it's not.
It's not like it's all on every day.
And we have good estimates from Steve for snow removal and for, um, the roads. So if we have a one-time snow removal, we're here, a heavy equipment, the equipment list right here. Yeah, he gives the map, actually we can't give him that. Yep, so he gave us a good, a, a good estimate for snow removal and this would be to include all fifty four driveways. It looks like it would be three, four and a quarter hours, so-
Driveways?
Yeah, you want your driveway one?
They never did before.
This is the new Buffalo Gap.
Not up and down driveways.
Not up and down. It's about the easement, right?
You know how a pile goes and then piles it there?
Don't pile it up.
He's gonna back up and push it out of the lane.
It says to swipe.
Swipe, swipe them, that's different than driveways.
So we're not looking at too many, and then this, the last time that he did the grading, I think it took you four hours, right? The first time? So we're not looking at a lot of hours in the grand scheme of the year.
Kind of an amount of snow or stuff. Did you guys speaking with us determine what depth was smaller before we called it out?
I thought we could determine four inches, but we haven't been setting any of them on that. But let me put that on next month's agenda. Four, I think it's four, but let's put it on there. Okay, Bruce?
That's what the county, uh, reports, four inches down we go out.
Perfect, that's good to know. So in a given year, we're talking very few hours. Unless we have closures that year, and then we'll just have to kind of see how we manage that, the, the unknown we have to manage. The typical.
Yeah, if you have a bad year, that's why you, actually that's why you build contingency into your budgets so that when you have a bad year, you can pull contingency by that.
Budgets, budget.
You have to have one to operate your home, right? Everybody gotta have one, so it's a town.
All right, any other public discussion or assistance, um?
Assistance on anything?
What's that?
Assistance on anything?
I was, I was gonna ask about, uh, that one. Yeah, hold on for that, sure, hold on. You're, you're gonna be next. So anything on the CDO and heavy equipment pay rates, any other inputs? So I make a motion that we make the CDO pay rate nineteen dollars an hour and the heavy equipment pay rate twenty one dollars an hour.
Aye, second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can she oppose?
So you're just kinda like ghosting the third council member when you say?
Am I ghosting them?
Well-
Cause they don't show.
Cause we don't have them, but you still have to say that.
Yeah, it's kind, it's best to do that.
I thought you were kinda looking to her to oppose.
Do you oppose? All right, so, um, so public time. This is a time for citizens to discuss issues or concerns for the town of Buffalo Gap directly to the board of trustees. The amount of time for discussion or presentations can be limited by the president of the board. Individuals shall refrain from discussing personalities. No action will be taken by the board of trustees without first being placed on a future agenda. So Shirley?
Yes. What's going on with how that lands with that arrangement?
Okay, so we, I, I am through the one that we have so far. They did give us a notice that they're working on the other two.
What?
They didn't give us a date, they said they, because of the timeframe, um, the bill is paid after May twentieth, so they said that they're being delayed. They won't, didn't give us a timeframe and their exact words in the order, which did not make phone calls to ask if there's a delay at one.
They were sent to be up.
Right.
They made it by the deadline.
Yeah.
That wasn't too long.
Yeah, that's just what we received.
This is what we got right here. Maybe more than that, but let's just see it.
This happened, the same thing happened last year. We didn't get ours till October, early July. We were supposed to have them by July first. Only a-
Yeah.
They just seem like, okay, there's people that probably don't want us to disappear from this town, but I don't like it around here.
I don't think it has anything to do with the town.
I think it does.
Huh?
I feel it does.
Oh, so what's the concern?
My concern is why is it not being every year?
Without having any historical knowledge, I, I don't, I can't help with that.
Last year Shirley was entirely my fault.
Glenn, please, let Shirley finish. Um, so your concern is, is the, that this is happening to you specifically for the, from the town? And I, I can't address that concern because I don't know anything historically, right? This is the first time I've been on the board and had to deal with the license. And the information I have is, is that department revenue says, and when I got this, I know I told you on Friday that I would call them, but I talked to Nikki this morning and when she told me that, that's why I didn't call them, because I did not wanna delay that any longer.
Yeah, cause they ran my list a couple of days ago, we had no time to.
We get it all approved way ahead of time.
Yeah.
And maybe there's, we've never had this problem before.
Let's, so right, so let's figure out what is that white process so that we're not in this situation again.
We, it's all been approved, we paid months ago.
Understood. So the, the real problem is, is how do we prevent this from happening again?
In the future, right?
I just have the question.
Diligently have to, when it's approved, send it in.
I, I was just-
Not let it languish somewhere.
Gotcha, if, if I can just ask, what is the process that you're currently doing so I can understand what has happened?
Yeah, at least since I just came in.
Yeah, and since she's new, that probably will help. This last time when you submitted it, when did you turn in your application? When did you do everything? Was it approved by the board? I just have to walk these through the process so I can-
So they get the, they get the application in the mail?
Let, let me just have them walk it through. And I know you, you did the process, but I'll ask you-
All together, yes.
Yeah, I'll ask you that piece of it, I just wanna hear from, from Greg.
Like you said, we've never had the problem before. It was May that we were here, it's approved, here's the money. What day does it happen? Be to the state like?
May fourth.
May fourth.
Right, and it was approved when?
May the first.
Whatever the meeting in May was.
Okay, now you just said something, you said this is the first time this has happened or has it happened before?
This is two years in a row now and ten years before that, there was never a problem. It might've came at midnight on the last day, but it was still there.
And everything, as far as I'm reading the timeframes, uh, we've never had to deal with process. So we can definitely sit down and figure out a way to make sure that it gets done in a timely manner. If you did it in May first, I would say that's putting it closer to the twentieth deadline, which could, as I read this, uh, applications being processed and the order they are received, those received after the due date, they can delay, but they're receiving them and they're processing them, maybe we can push, for y'all getting them to us and we approve them a lot sooner. Yeah, and if we approve them a lot sooner.
Well, it can be ten, you mean, because they were going through, from my understanding, the, the, they're going through the process of the process of having everything approved or as of the budget or whatever it's working on, so maybe we can push it back.
Would you, I mean, approved in the budget?
Well, no, like, would, the approval is bringing them into the meeting, like, uh, this or whatever. And if it's already something we're counting for, it could be, it could be down to-
Yeah, we should have jumped to this part.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so then it would go down to, we just pay it and it goes to, what we're saying is here's everything we're paying and it's hard to hear and we don't have to wait for that. Cause it could be a timing of a meeting too.
Yeah, could be a time. Now, if you don't mind me asking, Shirley, what were you gonna say on, on this part?
Basically the same thing he said, they turn in the application, they, they, they turn in their checks, we deposit their checks. At the next meeting-
When, when did they turn in this last time? Do you remember, I mean, roughly?
Yeah, like they said around May.
Okay.
So we deposit their checks and at the next ma, at the next meeting- So we deposit their checks, and at the next ma, at the next meeting, we, I write out the checks, we work through the checks, we send them in with the applications, and then we just wait for these letters from these guys.
And you know when you send it, did you send it in after that day first? Yeah, I think that's part of it.
I just made it out. So in May, you come forward with the process, right, it gets approved, but the board doesn't approve your check to go to the Department Revenue until June.
That's what I was just saying.
So that is the whole.
That's exactly what I just said, that's the whole of it.
So as soon as they get their license approved, that check should already been approved for payment at that board.
Well, that's what they usually do.
Okay, got it.
I mean, that's a process. You've got our money. I mean, either, yeah, either we gotta do it in April, or right then and there say, we approved the check to go to the state, whatever, something.
Well, and if we account for it in the budget, with the new process, we're talking about it.
Right there, if you gotta wait till June to approve the check, we're hours late.
Yeah, there should be no reason to approve it in June. We should be able to prove it at that point in time, the meeting.
When you approve the license, you approve the check.
Yep. I would concur with that.
And then we take it right to the mailbox.
We will, we will fix that in our process, it's really cool.
Is there some process where?
I mean, I can see where that.
Is it the bid?
Yeah, we, we keep half of, of one of the licenses. They, they pay three hundred, one hundred and fifty, and then we send one hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Her license.
Yes.
Your license.
I can see where that's a problem. You wait till June to approve the check, and it's supposed to be there by May twentieth, that just doesn't work.
Right.
Right.
Well, there's accounting processes in state law, and, and we've talked about it, we're gonna adjust and make it, the things that are budgeted for, which would be something like that, will, will be in that process that speeds up things, and we're not having to sit here and read everything unless it's something that has not been approved, and it's something.
Whole month of lag time there.
Yes.
Understood.
One hundred percent confirmed. We will work and fix that process.
So yes, and back to your comment, Shirley, it was on, it's the town's process that's causing the delay in the liquor license. So going forward, that will be adjusted.
Well, forgive me, but it's just.
Thank you. And thank you for walking us through that, because it helps us understand it as well, which hopefully.
Hundred percent.
Glenn?
I was saying, last year, what happened, where it was a hundred percent my fault for lack of knowledge of that whole process.
Yeah.
I had Shelley hold the money, and she sent nothing to the state, because that was my quick read of it, the money goes to us. That's what delayed it last year. I was wrong, a hundred percent. And I apologized to Shirley, I don't know how many times, and said, if you had any problem, send the sheriff to my house, cause it's my fault.
The sheriff's gonna come to the bar and say you're selling beer without a license, that's been approved, paid for.
Yeah, and that's why I said, send him to my house, because at that time I was president of the board. I screwed up last year. And since I left the board, it was not followed up that we need to address this process.
So now we know.
Just to, come the end of the year, it's the liquor license.
Yes.
And if that, that Shirley's like.
What is, when are the liquor licenses due?
Uh, I have, to have them by January first.
On the wall.
On the wall. So maybe we better start in October, October.
Yeah, cause you got Thanksgiving and Christmas, and the government likes to shut down.
So malt is due in the spring, and the liquor license is due in the winter?
Yeah.
October and May?
October and May.
Charlie? Don't they send the, have filled out the application from the state, and so that like triggers, to get it all, we fill it out immediately, turn it in, which should be plenty of time. I can see where the problem stems from, if you gotta wait a whole month just to say, we can write this check.
Right. Look at that process, Dave.
Cause you got our money.
Yeah.
We've compensated already, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any, any other public comments?
All right. We have a license.
Can I take it from the public? I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
So, uh, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Being adjourned.